All right, we're gonna go ahead now and begin our regular council meeting. Appreciate everybody being here. We'll begin tonight. Opening remark, I'll go ahead and offer that, and then if I can get somebody to do the pledge. Dave, will you do the pledge for us?
Father, we come before thee at this time grateful for the opportunity we have to be here tonight, grateful for those that are with us, pray that we'll be able to be guided in the proper way to run our city, that we might meet the needs of all the residents as best as we can, do so responsibly, and that we will be mindful of our actions. We are grateful that we live in this wonderful area, it's a beautiful area, and Father, will thou bless our city, that we may be able to continue to be such a wonderful place to live, and the beauty around us, and thy protection upon us, as we pray in the Jesus Christ name.
All right, so, the team after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, team, we'll start with you for a roll call vote.
Jim Chase.
Jared Peterson.
Ty Ellis.
Jump in the guns, Mike.
Ty Ellis.
Trisha Thomas.
Very fantastic. We need to have an adjusted timeframe, beginner's meeting at 7:08 tonight, and also approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
One second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. By the way, Paul Crook is absent tonight, so just make that clear. Public forum, Royce. Anybody that speaks in public forum, please make sure that you make your statement, make your comments in a form of a statement tonight. Keep it a couple minutes.
Pat Small.
First of all, I wanna express my family and my appreciation for the time and effort that you give to taking care of this city, so we thank you for that. The issue I wanna talk about today is the use of the Lower El Skyhawk open space. My home is right on the corner of that lower part, that is undeveloped. There has been talk of a parking lot, they've also asked for suggestions as what we would like to do with that. My, our first suggestion is just to leave it alone. It's a beautiful area, the main reason why my family and I moved up here was for the open air, the peace and the quiet that we have there. We paid a premium for that house, we paid more because of that view, and because of that open space. We also invested thirteen thousand dollars into a deck, for our family to be able to appreciate that, that quietness and that peacefulness there. Needless to say, with any big buildup, or especially with the parking lot down there, that value is gonna go way down. I have grandchildren, young grandchildren, that love to go out in that park, and they run and they play, and they just have a great time. Any vague activities in that area, such as parking lot, is gonna cause safety issues for my grandchildren. We, I was looking at the general plan, and looking at the community vision statement, and it says, "We desire to establish a safe, friendly, and family-oriented bedroom community that coexists with the natural hillside surrounding, where residents can enjoy the picturesque mountains, fresh air, native wildlife, grandeur of dark skies, and access to well-planned parks, trails, open space areas." There was also another area, we talked about, public facilities, and your statement there was, "Public facilities should be designed to protect the tranquility and privacy of surrounding residential areas." And my desire, and I hope you will consider it, is to leave that area alone. It's beautiful, we use it, we love it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Cherry Hazard.
You and I just wanna thank the council and mayor for your time and listening to us as well, and I am here to speak about that, that open space as well, and the proposal of a possible parking lot. My house, my house is on Skyhawk Way as well, and we're not right beside the open space, but we can see it from where we are. We're about two houses down, and I'm across the street from Pat Small's house, their house is adjacent to it. And in my notes, I'd just like to say, say that I think that the use of the open space should remain, the, the open space should remain as it is as well. And I, I just cited some benefits, I looked up some research about the benefits of open space in communities and neighborhoods like ours, and it promotes healthy, healthy living, obviously, for everybody. It increases mental health, physical health, and it just positively impacts people's lives. Number two, it filters pollution, water pollution, and just general pollution. And number three, it acts as a natural and noise reducer, being natural, it's just a noise reducer. And number four, it reduces dust in the air. That's very important, and I think all the residents adjacent to that area, and on Skyhawk Way, should enjoy the same, all those benefits, and more than I'm not citing, the same as everybody else in Elbridge. I think that's really important. And then, I wanted to talk really briefly about the possibility of a parking lot in that open space, and I can only think of two reasons how it will impact, and I think both are negative. Number one, the use of the parking lot will seriously negatively impact the homeowners' merit, obviously, for the health benefits I talked about, as well as their financial and their privacy. It'll just impact them. Headlights could be shining on a barbecue at night, which the driver of a car in that parking lot might not even intentionally want to impact anybody. It's unintentional, however, they pay premium for that area, they should have the privacy of enjoying a barbecue out along their deck, or in their lawn, just like everybody else. And number two, which I think is really important, if there's any other structure going up, like the school, in the near, in the future, near or far future, it will create a redundancy in parking lots. And I think the non-use of a proposed parking lot will result in an unattractive dead zone, or just a dead zone that won't be used, will be empty, and ugly, and hard to, in a sense of removed, if it's underutilized, will just probably remain there for years underutilized. And I really appreciate your time, and listening to you, thanks.
Thank you. Beth Wilson.
Also, thank you for your time. Like Pat, I looked at the community vision statement, and it's every reason why my family chose to move here. I love that statement. However, I believe that a parking lot, in that specific green space location, is in violation of the vision. I support a parking lot for the Elbridge Meadows Park and playground, if it's located onsite. An onsite parking lot would be in alignment with the park and open space policy, which indicates that access to higher-use public property should include adequate onsite parking lots. The general plan also states, "The visual effect of contiguous natural open space provides the feel that the community is nestled in a larger natural space." And that's how I feel when I go outside. My lot is small, it is, but we still paid a premium to have that access that we have right now. My kids love it, they go out there every day, they love to dig in the dirt, they look at the bugs. It's great, and it makes it feel like we have more, though we can still share it with everyone. A parking lot that's placed directly behind our homes, and within a natural trail area, doesn't support the feel of an open space. A parking lot next to homes takes away our view, fresh air, wildlife, and dark skies. I believe that it can be possible to provide a parking lot, if that is the absolute need of the community, it can serve the greater community, but we can find something without sacrificing the peace and safety of the homes immediately surrounding Elbridge Meadows Park. Please reconsider the placement of a parking lot for Elbridge Meadows, so my neighbors and I can enjoy our homes, and so that the greater Elbridge community can continue to enjoy the parking lot.
Lisa Barton.
Hello, I'm Lisa, and I want to talk about the same thing that my friends and neighbors are here talking about. I wore my shirt tonight, it's better than mountains, 'cause I truly believe that, I just, I love the nature, I love the mountains, I know we all do, it's a sentiment that's shared by everyone here. I am here to publicly oppose that parking lot that was proposed for that meadow space, and I am also here, from the bottom of my heart, to thank you all for listening to us, and for kinda seeing the concerns that we had, and acting on it so quickly as you did. It truly means a lot, and I thank you. I know some things could have been identified better on my end earlier, last year, to bring these issues up, but I also know that this is one of our concerns going forward, with regards to the lack of information that Elbridge supplied to the citizens regarding that parking lot, that is something that's so impactful to our properties and our neighborhood. My husband Tyson wishes he could be here, but he's out of town working, and two of our main concerns that he wanted me to kinda help get across while I was here is, number one, we would like to see a more comprehensive agenda and meeting minutes. The attachments, we would also like to see them be available on the website, so that we can see them for each item, 'cause right now they're not. And then, number two, we're just really concerned about the future conversation for the parking lot, and what is, what is that going to look like, kinda going forward for us? I know that I stated numerous reasons in my emails to you guys, for the reasons opposing, and all of that, and everything what these guys said, I totally agree with, but I would like to show you one thing, and that is kind of an impact picture that is from my property. And, just so you can see here, this, I live right at the back of Elbridge Horizon View Loop, my backyard backs up to the meadow. This is looking out from my backyard, and this top picture, I'm standing on our patio, the bark there is where our property line is, you can see the two dots I made there, that is where the stakes were for the parking lot, and so, I don't know if you can just imagine my, ugh, dismay, kind of envisioning blacktop right there, where it is now this beautiful meadow space. And then, this picture down below is standing from my sliding glass door, kinda same theme, looking out at a more broader view, but also, just so you know, our homes are at a lower elevation from where that meadow is, and we, and it would make a huge impact on our lives to have that parking lot in that spot. So I just wanted to really point that out, and, and make known that that was a really big deal to us. I was gonna say some more things with the same type along the lines that these guys said, but I will forego that, and just end, thank you for your work, thank you for your service, I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Oh, well, I'm just here to support.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead.
But basically, along those lines, I live on Quill Run Lane, so I'm not near that area, but, and I do know that there, you know, we have soccer there, and it's hard to drive down that street when everyone's there for soccer, so, and I love sports, it's fine. So, I know there's plans for our school building near the school, so I was, maybe a suggestion could be just sharing a parking lot with the school, and the area around the shed, or, you know, just adjacent to, or not adjacent, but next to the park. I also was worried about a parking lot being across the street, because kids have to cross it from the parking lot to get to the park, and people drive down that road really quickly, which I know really well, so, guess they just, what they said, and thank you for your time, and for your help in all you do, so, thank you.
And Justin Meyer.
So I just wanted to, just kinda tag along with what they're saying, I, I drive through there on the way to work, and like Jenny said, it was locked in cars, or I'm grateful that you guys are looking, at least I am, I'm grateful that you guys are looking at putting in a parking lot, because I think it is really needed, because, I mean, I go like ten miles an hour past those cars, watching for little kids, just darting in and out. So, my concern is kinda similar to Jenny's, I think having the park across the street doesn't really solve that safety issue, you're still gonna have kids trying to cross the road, and things like that. Having the, the park be, I'm sorry, the parking lot be in the same area as the park, either by the new, new pump station, or behind the, south of the pump station, I don't know how far out, having that cocktail road, I think is what it's called on the county maps, the parcel maps, I don't know how far out that is, but if you could just have a dirt path up there for you to have the cars in the dirt, I think that would be a good short-term solution, instead of doing a bad long-term solution, an expensive, long-term solution. So that's all, thank you for looking into the park, having a parking lot, 'cause it is needed, for sure, with all those cars, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is that it?
Can I make a statement real quick? Don't kill me. These are my neighbors, right? All I wanna say is, we table a parking lot, you know that, and I told you I would use your husband as a liaison to get in touch with everyone else. And as for tuning over things, that was your neighbor's recommendation, the council didn't want to do that. Your neighbors came to us and said, "We don't want the weeds in all of the natural space, we want something done." I just wanna clarify that, because we felt the same way as you did.
And that's come to light to me.
But that, okay, I don't want you to think that was not driven by anyone here, in fact, we are very opposed to it, so you pointing that helps us, in, you know what I'm saying? That's what I'm trying to say, is, I don't want you to think we were trying to get away with that, do away with that, we don't wanna be there. But I will get in touch with your husband when it comes around, and we are tabling it for now.
So I'll just say, thank you for your emails, and whatever caused us to pause, caused us to look at other alternatives, could be better alternatives, so thank you, appreciate that, for certainly doing that, for certainly doing that, so, thank you. Appreciate your input.
I wasn't trying to be contentious.
Okay, let's go on to our first line item, the tentative budget decision.
So what do we need to do?
Okay, so what we need to do tonight, we need to set a hearing, and our proposed date of hearing is July 11th?
July or June?
No, June, sorry. July.
Royce! We're going off the rails.
June 11th. We need to set-
Second Tuesday of-
Second Tuesday of June, to hold a public hearing, and to-
And a budget?
And then that night will, based off of the input you get from the public, adopt the budget that night. Is that right, Royce? But really, it's to set that public hearing.
Based on the budget, based on the night, or-
Based on the budget, you saw that.
Or anything we wanna throw in there possible.
But we have the ability to-
This is, tonight is the beginning of the transition to it becoming your budget.
Right, that's right.
So with that, we did not talk about truth and taxation.
Correct.
We have not proposed truth and taxation.
So if you're gonna-
Do we need to propose truth and taxation?
We don't know the certified statute, so that top number's gonna change, guaranteed. That 447, 195 will change. I think, I'm expecting it to change to the higher, but it could be lower.
But we don't need to have a truth and taxation.
Well, you're gonna have a truth and taxation if you intend on raising property taxes.
Which, based on your budget, we're not.
I have no reason, I have not presented that, we balance the budget, that's what we expect to have the-
You scared me there.
For the benefit of the public here, this is what's wrong with our system, because we don't know what we're getting until after, we would have already had to have set a date for the truth and taxation here.
That's true.
We don't even-
It's broken, our state legislatures, they, they don't even wanna fix it, they, they just don't get it. They don't know what type of a position it puts us in, the last couple times we had a proposal, it was more of a, "We don't know where we're gonna be, so we need to, to make sure that we have the ability to provide the services," that we need to, but now we're in a position where we're just gonna-
We, we have to pass a budget before we know how much the money the state's gonna give us.
Yep, and, and if there isn't enough money, then we start cutting things out of the budget, that's how we roll.
But we've been pretty darn good the last few years.
But right now, with the estimates moving forward, we don't anticipate that happening.
Unless you guys, I'm recommending that we don't, it's up to you guys, whether you want to hold a truth and taxation hearing, or not, and raise property taxes.
Trish's chance of being reelected or-
Does it say what it even?
Yeah, you, you did.
And if we do, we'd have to probably set a date for that.
All right, so we just need to, at this point in time, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for our budget on June 11th at 6:00 PM. Does that work?
Okay, I need a second.
A second.
And do we need roll call on this? We don't need it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And specifically to mention-
Mayor, a second, Beth.
Do I have that?
I do.
Royce, do we have to have a motion on no? We don't have to do a, we don't have to make a motion unless we're gonna go into truth and taxation. Elbridge Meadows, release durability and accept into the city.
That's all sidewalk that's been coming out, and in place. It's all they, they've done or less, no.
Why does it say?
Where?
Mr. Tuckett. How come it's two?
There's two letters, one to the mayor, to the city, and one that goes to the bank.
He's, that, that Tuckett's for the bank.
Derek Tuckett's with the-
Oh, this isn't Tuckett, Payson Tuckett.
No.
Okay, I'll give this one, what? You get a Payson letter? You could understand my concern, right?
Yeah, so we're basically asking him to hold back fifteen hundred dollars-
For the ramp.
Until we're certain that the ramp will-
To do durability on the ramp, yes.
Durability.
And everything looks good.
The ADA, yeah. Well, so does that need to be, they have assigned it.
Do you sign it? Everything looks good.
Does that exception need to be listed?
Which one's phase eight?
Fifteen hundred, yes.
Why can't I think, what's-
It's Hannah, Hannah Street. It's over off Golden Eagle Way, between Golden Eagle Way and Fox Crossing. Okay, I motion that Elbridge, or that the city, or Elbridge Meadows, we release from durability and accept into the city-
Elbridge Meadows, eight.
Elbridge Meadows, phase eight?
Yes.
Okay, that was none of her. Okay, let me start one. I motion that we release from durability, Elbridge Meadows, phase eight, and accept into the city, with the exception of the fifteen hundred dollars for the, your one-year durability for the ramp.
That was just replaced.
Yeah, no, it's just replaced.
I'll second that.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, passing now. All right, equip, let's see, equipment purchase, side by side, we've not had that discussion So, how many of you know where we've been on this, on this four-by-four winter access to the tank?
So why do you decide by side?
I think Jared's the only one that's been-
He's the only one that knows.
I need to know why.
He's part of the, he's the interrogator of the story, so.
Okay, so, I was, I was involved, we had a heavy snowstorm a month ago?
It was the first of March, because, or April, I was gone.
Okay, yeah, as today was gone, I get-
Every time.
I get the phone call, I get the phone call, and they can't get up to that upper well, SCSD, the, the snow had dropped power lines, and everything up there, they had to get up there and do it, they blew up. It's a 2002?
Our Polaris.
Polaris.
Four-wheeler, we have.
Four-wheeler.
That we have tracks on.
Is the only way that the city has to get to these remote locations in the winter, other than calling Jared to borrow snowmobiles.
Why are we not borrowing SCSDs?
Cause they're-
They, they reuse them. Okay, so, hold on, I took, McKay called, and I'm happy to do this, okay? But there may be a time that I'm not around. Okay, so, we got three snowmobiles, we have to take care of it, and all the time I was thinking, this is stupid, okay? You've got a well up there that we use primarily for winter use, okay? We're not allowed to plow up to it, because it's up in the association, we also have to access the upper tanks and some stuff there. I guess there's some solar panels need to be cleaned, I don't know, they give you a list of stuff, right?
And we need, first date, we need to look at all of our water infrastructure at least once a week.
Yeah, so-
Security.
Yeah, and this is all being done by a forager that was sixteen, sixteen years old, carries one person, and it, and it broke, and anyways.
So why can't you replace it with another forager?
So-
It's not as cool?
No. So, and, they're, they're actually almost about as much money.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are.
They are.
So let's just talk about this a little bit more.
Okay, so, so I, so I called Devon down there, I buy my snowmobiles and stuff from him, and he gave the city a screamer raid on an eight hundred, and he recommended that because they have power steering from the tracks, right? Okay, now, they went on a field trip, and for not much more, they get the one thousand option, and then I think Dave found another option, that's a little bit cheaper with a brand I hadn't heard of, but, anyway, so there's, I guess there's three options there, but.
So the reason we wanted the side by side is, number one, we could carry more than one person.
You don't like the guy straddling behind you, huh?
Two people.
I see no problem with that.
No, no, there's, there's some other problems too.
Minimum two. So, and this will have the, the bed on the back of it, so that we can carry tools, and I can make-
But we need a 2019 model.
What's in the stores right here, bro? And then, with this one, I can build a pipe rack that we can actually haul our pipe up, 'cause we have the break up here on the hillside-
In the winter.
In the winter, and four Wyatt's on a four-wheeler, straddling a pipe, a water pipe, to get it up that hill.
Did it work?
It was, it was a feat to watch them go up the hill, holding the toolbox that they needed, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I was up there, saw it happen.
Many trips, blah, 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 but, this will definitely serve us much better.
And it's something you can use your-
So, let me just tell you where I'm at on this. Water is our number one responsibility in this city, and if you can't get, on a reliable basis, without borrowing equipment from a third party to your assets, and the most valuable thing in your city, we are negligent as a city, I believe.
I can get behind that, I can get behind that.
That's where I'm at. So, you guys can make the decision.
But what I can't get behind is-
But, for that amount of money, when that water tank's down, I want people up there, and I wanna meet there now.
Me too, but-
If we wait, we're gonna have to buy a 2020.
I need a used one, that is in decent condition, I don't know why we got to have top of the line.
But, well, this one will last us longer. Yes, it's not, but this one will last us longer, right, 'cause it's new off the floor, and we're not getting someone else's, but they took out to the sand dunes, and beat the crap out of it, or whatever, we don't know what you're getting. You know, when you buy used equipment, you don't know what you're getting, you do same thing with your cars.
No, we buy used cars.
No, that's what I'm saying, but you don't know what you're getting.
No, but we, our city buys used cars.
You're not gonna save a lot. How old are you gonna go?
I don't know, but gosh, that seems like a lot of money for a side by side.
Just a, just a regular four-by, four-wheeler is probably what?
Mine was five thousand. The one I have at my house was five thousand, and it is a good four-wheeler, and it's a good condition, so you can't say to me that twenty thousand dollars is a five.
So, so six thousand of that is the tracks.
To get the license.
Yeah, correct, that's the tracks.
And, but do we already have them for a four-wheeler, if we were to replace the four-wheeler, do we already have the tracks?
You don't wanna use anything off the-
It's gotta be fit for the size of the machine.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't-
That's part of the problem, I think, that we've had with the four-wheelers, is that we put these tracks on it, it wasn't built for it, so we put additional, undo, the stresses that are on it are not really what it was made for. Far better to take those off, put a plow on it, and use it to plow our sidewalks, our areas that we have to plow.
Yeah, Drew, our park's gotta be able to get around a lot quicker, get that done quicker, instead of using the track.
Okay, but I feel like maybe we should look into, whatever, I mean, you guys can vote for it, so, that's fine.
So what's the difference between the two of them? You have two of them there.
There's actually three.
There's three.
There's three. So you've got, the Can-Am is an eight hundred, and a one thousand option.
Which ones, which ones is that, the first?
And then the Escape one, yes, Dave's family bought, or somebody's bought this other brand, I never heard of one.
And I was just down in Gobble Valley this weekend, and they brought their Gobble, and I got to run it pretty hard.
This is what I'm concerned about, Dave.
It's a lot more than, he takes this down to Gobble Valley.
That's the nice doo-ba.
Yeah, we'll be doing that. You know, I run theirs around, it's the same brand, it's eight hundred instead of a thousand.
Um, which one, that's a couple?
The CF model.
What's this one?
That's a Canadian brand, it's highly rated.
That's the track assembly, just separated out, like the five.
Okay, this is just the track assembly, separated out.
But the other one, that's the total.
Okay, on one of them, it says something about a service name for a thousand, does that mean?
So that's the warranty that make, that it comes with.
Like, anything happens?
Yes, it's, it's a very good warranty.
How long is it?
We added another five.
You get a year, and then there's five more.
So after you're...
It's all powers.
Huh? After a year, everything, after six years of breaks?
It's like everything else.
But that's not with the stuff we need, right? This twenty thousand?
No, the twenty includes the tires.
Yes, including, but Dee just printed that out separately, so it's a cost of...
So that's included with this?
That's included, I believe.
You'll see a line there.
Jared, which is the one that you went and got?
The Can-Am.
That's this guy back here?
So, yeah, so I got the 800, and he thought that is a middle one, right?
I agree, but we need a thousand.
If, if you want the thousand, no big deal. I don't think they need a full cab, and that's just because I run them.
Yeah.
For work, and they break the cabs, right, if they want windshield wiper. But I wouldn't do the, I wouldn't do a cab.
Yeah, we just, we just put the lid, just the lid in the windshield, that's it.
Yep.
So yours, this one doesn't have a warranty?
They have warranties.
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's not in there?
No, it's in there.
Am I reading this on papers?
We didn't get, we didn't get a price for extended, but the Can-Am, it's gonna be six months.
It, it has, it says down here at the bottom, it's got a one-year.
The Can-Am?
Says one-year, right?
Yeah, I thought it was...
You can get an extended for up to thirty months.
So, he actually gave the city a better price than he can give me as a business.
Is this the...
Because they actually are in the dealer network for state.
Is this the guy that lives in Eldridge? No?
No, actually, when we were doing sandbags, he was up here. He doesn't live in Eldridge, he was up here.
But there is someone that owns a thing that lives here, right?
They sell accessories.
Yeah.
Just accessories, okay. You know I'm all about supporting local, right?
And this is a hundred percent allocated to water, but...
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Well, then I'm not...
I, I don't, I don't know the other brand, I just know...
I just wanna compare apples to apples, though, so I wanna, so with the extended warranty, what is, you know what I mean? Don't you think, so we know?
Oh, money costs money, so... What's it say there, though, it says thirty months is what you can get with the Can-Am?
Versus six years?
Five years, so you only get a full of six.
Yeah, but, that's what I'm saying, what's the thirty months, I need to know about it.
So, do you want them?
I don't wanna go in there.
Would it be better with the big rigs on this one, where you have two people in it, on steep slopes in the snow?
Yeah, I would, I would think the thousand... He said the 800 is a middle, and that's what he pressed when I went in, when, was a new, when Royce went and looked at them. They decided to give the thousand option, so they left it.
Yeah, that's, that's...
So that's the...
You're running tracks and deep, and drives, yeah.
And in some cases, some real steep hills.
Can we put these in like, something someone can understand? I have no idea what this is. Is this the one you want, the, the...
That one is here.
That one's the Can-Am.
So that's the Can-Am.
Yes, and, but then he keeps saying something about an eight hundred or a thousand, is that more?
Okay.
The D, the HD10 is a thousand, the HD8 is the big, yeah, and then you gotta add the tracks onto this.
Wait, onto this one?
On the seven, seventeen...
So yeah, you're adding six.
So that's a lot more money. And it has a worse yield, is it probably? That's what I'm trying to get, I need real numbers here.
Yeah.
So let me ask you a question. Do you, do you, I'm gonna be really blunt here.
Exactly.
I'm not really interested in you guys micromanaging which one we get.
No.
I'm much more interested in giving us money so we can go get one of these two things and be done with this problem.
I...
Sorry to be that blunt, but you're doing administrative micromanagement.
When I was helping out that day, I was thinking, if this was my guys, they would have...
We need to do this, cause this is ridiculous. Snowbills aren't even the right thing for what we were doing that day.
Yeah.
Okay, but...
And that's, that's what the city had before we got the four-wheeler.
But we need to buy a new one right off the lot. You can understand, I wouldn't buy that for myself, so I have to justify spending taxpayer dollars on something I would never purchase.
But you're, you're not going out on a weekly basis...
You have to understand that, I have to feel good about that, if I'm gonna vote for it, and if I wouldn't pay for that myself, then I don't... That's my, that's my big beef. I don't think we should buy a brand new.
So you're gonna say, you can probably go get a year, two old, maybe say, three thousand dollars, and the extended warranty's gonna cost you more.
Maybe, maybe.
If you can get one.
If you can get one, yeah.
I don't know about you, but three thousand dollars, I can take it.
I could use a court against you. You and your dad, you know? Something about your dad. Something about money and, you know, like them.
When you're considering water and citizens' water, it's a pretty critical tool.
And, and, no, it's, it's, it's essential.
Think about what we've been doing. We've been buying, we've been trying to keep ahead of this game. If you buy one, three, four years old, and I gotta replace it in three years...
You gotta replace it three years soon. I don't want to depreciate this.
We're doing this whole change in the way we...
But we haven't...
Trying to get ahead of the curve. So we don't, we're not managing in crisis mode all the time. I don't wanna see this on the agenda for six years.
I don't either.
And from what I hear is, the money's, we're, we're, I mean, money's there, right?
Nope.
Or...
Yes, I mean, it's all come down to water, but we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have come to you if we hadn't got...
We didn't have the money.
Good feel for the expense.
Remember the green money monster?
Yes.
Royce, do you feel that we need to get this?
I do fit.
As the, as the green money monster?
I agree with all the comments as Robert. That four-wheeler is not the way to be doing this.
So what do you want us to do?
It's five, six months out here.
I want a motion.
I want a, okay.
What do we need?
I motion.
What motion? We gotta have a...
That we're gonna buy a...
I motion that we buy the Can-Am HD10 for, I guess it's a twenty-two thousand, seven oh eight, twenty-two.
But then what about extended warranty and, no?
I already have a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye. May?
May.
We're gonna make you both.
Yes!
Aye.
I just don't think we have enough information to be making announcements, we have researched it out. But Dave?
Okay, most curious.
Two to two, and the mayor had to vote.
Which we've always wanted.
Yeah, now, for the reason I voted no, was I felt we should've just allocated the money and let...
Thank you, I would've done the same thing.
That's, that's the only reason I voted no. Not, not that I was opposed to the idea.
I wasn't opposed to the idea either, I just felt like it wasn't well researched, and we hadn't, we didn't have all the information.
Well, if we'd had the...
But it, it passed.
I should've called you that day.
You should've. I couldn't come up there on my four-wheeler.
Alright, you're up there with snowbills, fighting it.
Royce, land purchase.
Driving over trees and my snowbills.
Is this just a discussion to go forward?
Next time, Jared.
The engagement, not that we know how much, right?
Then we're gonna need money to do it, yes.
So, you wanna...
David will explain.
You tee it up, will you?
Yeah. Get this back up and running.
Oh, this is what, you brought your computer, and you've been waiting a whole night for this?
That's a big moment.
That's my car, from there?
No.
Do you need us to move to the other side of the ring?
Um, I doubt it.
If you wanna leave, you can.
Right here, Mayor? Oh. You can present the idea, we need the other discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so, this right here is eleven two hundred, you can see my mouse? This is Rocky Mountain Way. This right here is that trail that's down there, and all of a sudden, stops.
Oh.
So, we have talked with the landowners here about purchasing a small amount here to continue that trail all the way to Rocky Mountain Way, which will eventually continue on and, and go into Premier Point. So, what we need to be able to do...
Isn't that a pasture right there?
No.
Oh, no, the other, the other side, okay, okay, sorry.
Eventually it will be.
Yeah, on the other side, yeah.
Okay, I hear what you're saying now, sorry.
So, right now, the trail ends right here, there's an electrical box, you know, and all that. So what we propose to them is to come out, get around that electrical box, and then come back in a little bit, and take, and by ten feet off of them, the whole length of that, their property, so we can finish that trail off.
Okay.
So that's...
Can we use money for this?
You have to use money for it.
No, I need money, we use any tax case at all? This isn't...
It's not in the capital facilities, so...
Does this affect setbacks or anything like that? Like, the non-controlling lot?
No, no, they're already, yeah, they, they've done a good amount there.
And are they willing to sell it?
Yes, well, at this point, yes, so now what we have to do is get the survey and appraisal.
And is it potentially, or eventually, not potentially, eventually going to keep going through, and then it'll meet up with the other one?
When that develops, huh?
Yeah, so all this here, so the trail will continue on this way.
I know, but is that, if they're gonna develop out, aren't they gonna keep that pasture?
I don't know, I don't know.
The people that are using it don't even own it, they're just using it for...
No, but they have a contract to purchase it.
They have the first part of the refusal.
Yeah.
Yep.
So somewhere down the line, that's what your master plan...
But that's in the plan, someone that has developed, they come in and they want approval, they're gonna be putting the trail...
No, I agree with you, I agree with you.
Yeah.
No, I think we should do it, I think we need to do it.
It's just that long to put in before the master plan called it in.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's along the rest of, pretty much.
It is, and it's very nice, because that eleven two hundred is a danger zone.
So, and just so you know, we've tried everything else we could to get a trail, go down off that hill, go along the road. County is not good with doing anything. They own that hole right away, and they eventually say that they will be making the two-lane each-way road through there.
On eleven two hundred?
Uh-huh, that's part of the general, the county general transportation plan.
Are they gonna slow down the speed on that one?
No, you add another lane, they're gonna bump it up. Yeah.
So, so that's on the way. No, that would be the appraisal, so we would just ask full market value.
Right.
So, but we, do you know what that would be?
I, I don't.
Are we talking like eight grand?
Well, I would think that he...
Twenty-five grand.
No, you know, I'd be comfortable with what we're doing up here, we approved tonight of them. Eldridge Drive, that one lot.
Well, no, cause...
You don't want to go in, no?
We're just buying, we're just buying a trail, we can buy that one.
No, so you're gonna have that plus the, whatever that is.
Well, if we're gonna really do the trail system, we need to do it, so that's, we're gonna, I mean, what do you do, you go off their corner, and then go back on?
Well, and you can't, because that's county right away, and they won't let us.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to do it.
It's on here for a land purchase, so what's the decision? Should we let this go out for appraisal?
Yeah, appraisal and the survey.
Move forward on it?
That's what we need the motion for, we just want...
That's it?
We just want council's approval to...
Is our cost for that?
For those. So, appraisal probably figure out to two thousand, and, um, uh, uh, I'm sorry, survey around two thousand, appraisal between two and five hundred.
About twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Do, do we have to survey it before we appraise it? Can't we just get appraisal for so much property there?
Well, you have to...
And then we can work the survey into the cost of the purchase, and the, why does that need to be done up front? Right?
Yeah.
So, so the, the land purchase would be acquired based on the appraisal, right?
Yeah, that's true.
But if we have to pay for it either way?